Monday, August 20th, the order, we have a forum and the agenda was properly posted.
Yes.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item, nothing tonight?
Nothing tonight.
We did get an email.
Oh.
It was, she thought it was on the agenda, but it wasn't, so maybe...
Okay. Is that the splash pad?
Yeah.
Issue, okay, well, it's not an agenda item, but I guess I'll read it. From Heidi Murphy, sending a note to village trustees regarding money for the splash pad in the budget. I believe it will be discussed tonight and unfortunately I may able to attend. I don't know how much we're gonna discuss, it's not actually on the agenda, but, and it's in support of the splash pad, and she's at 3,002 pheasant run in West Lawn. All right, and I'll give that to Lisa, so we got, I guess, a record of it.
She may be referring to the financial management plan update.
Oh, okay. That makes more sense, all right. Okay. We have nothing else. And item five is discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of August 6, 2018. Any corrections, additions, comments?
I just saw for the closed session to add you in there as saying aye for both the beginning and the end.
Oh, for the license, Stan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, yeah, right.
Public license.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I had one question.
Yeah.
So, under 8C, new business, looked like we had, looked like we postponed or canceled the September 3 meeting and we already moved the September 17 meeting to E2 at the municipal service building.
Right.
If that's a done deal, is there something different that's gonna happen under new business, 7C on the agenda, or is that...
Well, that wasn't on the agenda last time. I know that was included in the motion, but...
Okay.
Just to, I think, just to clarify, just because of...
Sure.
I mean, some, something like changing a meeting, I, I think we just put it on here just to, just to be sure.
Okay. All right. So, any other comments, corrections, and minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With the corrections.
Motion and second to approve with the corrections. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item six, unfinished business, discuss and consider village facilities use policy. We've talked about this, I think, last meeting, but Lee, I guess, from a legal standpoint, is there anything you want to, I know Melissa and John have some things that they wanna contribute, but...
Well, let's let the Melissa and John make their presentation before we can ask questions, and then I can comment on that.
Okay. You're the one, I know you both had some ideas for a couple of years ago.
Total opposite. I, I guess, after hearing from Matt and how this room is used, that I think it's important that we keep it available for village business, available during the day, and so that's why I figured to have a policy where it isn't, it's where we can, where we don't allow it to be rented out or used by other groups.
And what I did is, the examples that Matt had, I know, prior to the last meeting, I thought DeForest had a really good one. Essentially, what I took out was, they had in their, like, anniversaries and birthday parties and graduation parties, and I didn't feel that was really for official business, but kind of there, like, official business, whether that's homeowners associations or meeting with constituents, like, the first time when I requested it, there wasn't a policy, but there was probably forty to fifty people in attendance in regards to the potential school referendum, that they just wanted an overview. And I left some things in red, because I think, I feel that the staff could probably better answer those questions. And really, it's not charging, it's, I think it's a deposit, for lack of a better term, just to make sure that it's cleaned properly, you know, when left.
Yeah, carpet cleaning would be the biggest thing I could see, but...
Yep. So, I took out everything into DeForest policy that pertained to, like, non-official business, in my opinion, and kept everything in there that pertained to, you know, government use or quasi-government official business.
And, like, a meeting after hours, you almost have to have some, one of us here to lock up, or, I don't know.
I grabbed the key from Matt and Lisa on Friday, I got the once-over, and, yeah, the hardest part, that's gotta get a lesson on us, how to keep that door open in the front, but we figured it out.
Okay.
And just made sure that it was locked afterwards, so, I think the policy addresses it, but, you know, it's just open for discussion.
Sure.
And just because, you know, some of you might be seeing it for the first time, and like I said, I left some that I feel are better provided with staff input, as far as, like, what hours they want it operational, and do we wanna collect a, you know, a check and a deposit, and the occupancy of this building, as well as the municipal building. So, I'd be, I would be fine if we table it to get staff input and wait another meeting, but it's open for discussion at this point.
Lee, anything?
Well, my only question or comment is that my concern is that if somebody somehow breaches the security of the office, you got a lot of confidential stuff in there, personnel records, and, not that somebody's gonna rent this place just for the sole purpose of breaking into the business office, but that, that's a concern of mine, and I guess the other thing would be, is there the pot, I mean, you're not trying to limit people from having places, but I, I think that there are quite a few others that might be available, like, well, I know the Houston's were talking about opening up their room, a community room, Menona Bank has a room. So, again, it's just, it's just a concern that, from a safety and, are you gonna be able to keep the records confidential, keep people out of there?
Okay, any thoughts, any ideas?
My question on that is, I mean, shouldn't confidential records be under double lock and key, or additional safeguard, or, just thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, John, I don't know exactly, but my, that there are, you know, a number of projects that we're working on, things that people have, developer has submitted, for example, and again, whether that's really even an issue, it's more of, are there some alternatives to using the room that, that are out there? Because having lived through the carpet from 2003, is it?
1993.
1993 till here, I mean, it was like, you could get enough dust and dirt to make your own little mound, and that was, and, and the chairs. But again, it's just, I'm just bringing up something that's, was one of the things, I think, that's mentioned in the article from Claire Silverman of the league, but it's certainly up to the board what they wanna do.
I mean, I'm trying to think of, you'd almost have to have, like, blackout dates if we're gonna rent it in the evening, obviously, village board meetings, planning committee, that kinda stuff. You know, we gotta think of something, but if you wanna table it till the next meeting, we're good with that, too. Does anybody have any thoughts on how you do this?
I guess I'd like input from staff.
Okay.
They're talking to constituents outside of here that may be DeForest or whatever. Not, we've got the policy certainly, but how does it work? You know? That's what I wanna know.
Just the most difficult thing, just up the, off the top, as far as it being the only meeting room in village hall, is that a lot of the meetings are kind of unscheduled. I don't, my office isn't very big, so oftentimes even take a phone, and the soundproofing isn't great in here, too, so if there's any kind of sense of a phone call, I don't take it in the office, because the whole office can hear. If my door's closed, you can, I may as well keep the door open, because you can still hear everything, so I usually come over here, take phone, phone calls. And then, other meetings, people pop in and we just, you know, ask them to wait in here and we'll come and, come and meet, so it's a little difficult during the day to kinda schedule that, but after hours, if it doesn't conflict with a village meeting, you know, provided just general maintenance and upkeep, that would be a concern, there, there aren't security cameras here, I don't know if that would be something that would wanna be looked at, but, yeah, I can reach out to, to Forest to ask them more about that.
But it is possible to, like, lock all the other doors, so they could just come in this door, use the bathrooms or this room, and that's it, I mean, the way it's kinda set.
Yeah, I mean, I've some, I don't think this building was necessarily built for, you know, real, you know, much of a security focus, as far as not having village representatives there.
Okay.
Even despite this discussion, though, do we have any place on our village website indicating the other alternatives in the village that are out there? I mean...
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
You've got Flynn Hall, you've got, I know there's a community room at GDS, Win and F, the Houston's opened up their facility, which is gorgeous, by the way, and three times as large as this. I mean, that might be helpful, too. I think Menona Bank has, has a community room.
Wisconsin Bank Trust.
Wisconsin Bank Trust, so there's other alternatives, even despite this discussion, I think, that would be helpful for citizens to know about, particularly somebody that's maybe newer, has only been here a little while. I don't know, there's other alternatives, so you probably should say, hey, these are some, you know, in who to contact.
So, we could ask, like, their permission to put it on our website, say, let people know about it, or...
Yeah, I think that would be the perfect thing to get. And then, certainly have this discussion to...
I'd like to see the board meet at Flynn Hall at least once a year, just to kinda get a flavor for when government was...
What it used to be?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right, so I guess we can table it.
Motion to table.
Okay. Motion and second to table pending more input from staff. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We're down to new business. 7A, we have a representative here from Keller's, I think he's currently in Deerfield, you said, Matt, and...
Greg Johnson's in Deerfield, up for a different meeting, and just asked that we shift this till later in the meeting, if that's okay with the board.
It's all right with everybody, we'll move 7A down more toward the end and go on to 7B and let Greg get a chance to get over here from Deerfield. Okay. 7B, discuss and consider new operators licenses for July 2018 to June 2019 for Hillary Stetursky, Skylar Berry, Kristen Cooper, Andrew Denarek, and Juliana Thompson, I hope I said that right. Any issues with these folks?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve Hillary, Skylar, Kristen, Andrew, and Juliana, four operators licenses. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 7C, discuss and consider September 17, 2018, village board meeting date change and location change to September 18, 2018, and I think we'd also talk about the location over at the municipal services building.
Correct. So, just kinda reaffirming what was included in the last motion, but it wasn't on the, wasn't on the agenda last time.
Right, and I think we were planning on the conference room at the municipal services building?
Yep.
Same time, 16, 6:30?
It'll be a little tight, but it's only one meeting, so...
Okay. And Chief, there is a television similar to that, if we need it, for some kind of a...
Yes.
Okay. And as far as getting in there, will somebody be there, and we can just be open at that point?
Oh, sure.
Okay. All right. All right, so then...
Any motion for that, or?
Discuss and consider, so, yeah.
Motion that we change the date to the 18th, change the location to the municipal building on Progress Drive.
Is there a second? Motion and second to change our September 17, 2018 village board meeting to September 18, same time at the municipal service building on Progress Drive. Any other discussion?
I just had one item that I was made aware of late Friday, that Chris Hampton wanted to meet over the weekend, and it's in regards to paving up at the fire station. What was not included in the bid is the driveway to the right that leads down to EMS. So, I got a little bit of backstory on how that all works, it abuts with Dale Houston's farmland, and that's his main driveway in, and he asked that, he asked that we share the cost with the town and himself. So, the contractor who was awarded the bid gave the estimate of $12,015.60. For fresh evidence memory, I think we allocated, combined between the town and the village, $70,000, and since we're moving the asphalt, they dropped to $10,000, so it's $68,000 and some change. So, we do have about $1,000 in there, and with this estimate, it would leave us between all three at $4,005.20, so we'd have to figure out an extra $4,000. And I'm bringing that up, because they're scheduled to start work, JJ, I wanna say, like, the 10th or the 11th in September, without permitting, so we're gonna have to provide some sort of response, and the response of, you know, it's not on the agenda, it's gonna have to wait a month, probably not gonna fly with the contractor...
Right.
This time around, so I'm just bringing that up. It's also, Mr. Houston donated $25,000 to EMS last year, and there was some discussion that, whatever this would cost him, and it's not shared between the three, he, the town, and the village, that that might be upheld from the donation this year. And speaking with Chris, it sounds like maybe the chief had budgeted for that $25,000 for some equipment.
Okay. And the $4,000 change, that's our share, or is that the...
If, if the $12,015.60, I confirmed with Chris after we got this bid, $4,005.20 would come from the village, and then the same amount would come from Dale Houston, yep, and the third would come from the town.
Josh, who owns the easement? Do the Houston's or...
I would imagine the town.
We pull out into their driveway there, and...
Yeah, it's the south side.
And we paved that to begin with.
Yes.
Is that the thing that goes down towards the, correct?
To the EM, yep. No, it doesn't go, it goes straight back to east, so you can take a left into what used to be the police department, now EMS has taken that over, there's a small parking lot down there, and you can kinda see the line, which is, I don't know, cut in the asphalt, you know, where his property begins and the right-of-way or the easement ends.
So, we kind of established that by paving it to begin with, in my mind, it's kind of shared all of our deal, that part of that driveway. It's just my opinion.
And I think it would probably make more sense to do it all at once than...
Yeah.
Hope to have somebody come back.
Yeah. Because it's gonna cost more than you have someone come back.
Yeah.
Was there a contract at that time indicating any...
Probably.
Well, if you'll indulge me for a second, this actually brings up something that I wanted to talk about tonight, anyway. To really get an answer to the question of what to do with the emergency services building at any one point in time, there's like three different documents you need to look at. One is the last page of the 1997 contract to build what was initially gonna be the fire station, and then it expanded to the emergency services building. And there are duties for the town and the village set out in there. Second thing that you have to look at is, a couple of years ago, we created, it was kind of a sinking fund, I think you'd call it, I mean, just to set aside money for repair work, and that was between the village and the town. But, the things that are talked about in the 1997 agreement are actually things like telephones that are being installed, and it's just grossly aged, and, you know, a lot of these questions kinda fall in the cracks in terms of who pays for what and when, and it's something that I, I hope that a joint fire or the board just says, hey, let's get these things pulled together, because I, it's hard to really know what, what's what. And, so, the, at the time that the fire station was being built or rebuilt, the town owned that land, and then the village, the town deeded 50% of the land to the village, so that it was a joint ownership. And in terms of what was included in that deed, you know, we'd have to go back and check. And, you know, that's really the history of it, to this point.
And it sounds like when it was bid out, it probably should have been specified to include that whole part, I would think, probably what should have happened.
We're kinda under the assumption that it, it include all of that.
That's what happens, essentially, I think.
Yeah.
So, is that part, the EMS part, or is it...
Sure, by everyone that uses that building. Yeah, I don't know if fire goes down in that area.
Absolutely.
You do, yeah.
We've got storage room and training down there.
Okay.
It's used, and we do use it for training as well.
Okay.
For crops and a lot of different things. Right now, they have a simulated house that's built on it.
Yep. Okay.
So, ours.
Well, we're a little far afield of anything on the agenda, but I, I think that we're, you know, we should give some consideration to, is there the need for a special short meeting to deal with this, or is that something that, joint, is it joint fire, who made the bids or did the bids?
Yeah.
I don't know, is that something that they can, that they can deal with, or...
Can, I don't think we're meeting until September, first week of September.
I think it's actually right.
October.
Yeah. Is it usually the last Monday?
Yeah, I can push back to October 2nd, is the next joint fire meeting, so it's gonna be well past, probably the job is done. And one last item, for what it's worth, Chris has obviously gotta take it back to the town board, but he felt that they had the money to split their...
Right.
So, you said we budgeted $70,000 for this, and that the bid came in at 68, right, our share, and then the extra 12, so it is really four or two more over the budget?
Twelve over.
Twelve over, but what's our share? Oh, our share, oh, yeah.
Our share would be $4,005, and we have...
In addition to what was...
A little less than $1,000 under budget, is what the village portion was, so we'd have to come up with about $3,000.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Where would that come out of?
Oh, it's not an agenda item either, so I don't think it really...
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to, like we said, we probably would have to have just a, like, one item agenda meeting, and we've done that once or twice, I think. And when do we need an answer, John?
Probably before they start work, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Is that what, the second week in September, do you say, John, or...
Yeah, the 10th or 11th.
The Labor Day is Monday, the 3rd. I don't know, would we be able to get a quorum together sometime in the first week of September, just for something like this?
Well, three of us are gonna be at the police meeting, law enforcement commission, committee, next week.
Could we just try to get a quorum of a couple more people?
When is that?
When is that?
Tuesday, the 20...
28th.
28th?
Just join us for 10 minutes?
I'm available.
I can probably make it through.
What time?
It starts at 5:30, we can wrap up a little after 6.
Okay.
But if we could put it on that agenda, would that work?
I would put on that agenda, I would just set a separate agenda for like 6:30 or something, 5:45 or...
5:45 on the Tuesday, the 28th.
We'll be done in an hour, I think we can squeeze it in, if we work real hard.
That way, we can at least...
Does anybody know, well, let's see, could someone kinda talk to Chris, find out, is that strip the hours, the town and the villages? If it is, that's, you know, one thing, if it's a private one, then I guess you gotta consider whether you wanna do it or not.
I have a feeling the driveway, yeah, it's a paved area down below, I think, that we're really concerned about that, right, Jude, down by, the paved area down below, type of old police department, is that, we're wondering about the road itself, if that's part of the fire department property, or if that's...
That means we have to wait for an hour. All right, I'll just, I'll call Chris, he and I enjoy talking to each other, and just ask him, because I understand it's providing access, and maybe, I don't recall there being an agreement, but at that time, there was a lot of, you know, talk about locations, so...
And then we can deal with it, I guess, the proper way, on the 28th, 5:45, if that works for people.
Okay.
We'll just post a separate meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, just, yeah, just remember it's down there, not up here.
Okay. We'll see at least four members to be able to get a quorum, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, hopefully.
Good idea. Okay. And then we're good with the change to September 18, and we pass that.
Did we?
Did we?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so now we're down to 7D, discuss and consider options for purchasing or renting a DS 200 election tabulator for the November election, I'll let Lisa talk about that.
There's a memo in your packet that outlines the cost of renting a DS 200 versus purchasing. I've talked to you before about the needs for the election. This is the second time that we've rented it since I've been here at that cost, so at this point, you know, we're, we're going to be putting into the financial management plan a line item for election equipment, and this would be one of the items to purchase, so there is money available in this current year's budget if we were to purchase it in 2018 and save that $1,200 in rental.
The rental is gonna be more than just buying it at some point.
Exactly. And each year, it goes up, we had a scare of even possibly not being able to get a machine for November, so that's the other aspect, because...
Hanging chads.
Yeah. No, we don't want that. So, that's where this stands, I mean, if you have any other questions as far as...
It looks like it pays for itself in five years, right?
Yeah.
And it's not like it's gonna be obsolete, like, in a year or two?
No.
Okay.
Before we rented it.
No.
What?
Yeah, I mean, any thoughts?
Well, see, because the population has grown, and as I've talked to you before, this polling location is really getting at its capacity, and so that second machine helps, one, with processing absentee ballots, which in these bigger elections, we get numerous absentee, we probably wouldn't be able to process them in the time allotted, or we'd be here until early morning processing the absentees if we didn't have a second machine. So, it's kinda twofold, it helps with the process of people coming in to vote, and then to process the absentees, and it's because our population's growing that you're gonna need that equipment.
Yeah, it helps us put off getting a second polling location.
Exactly, which, if that happens, you know, it's more equipment, more poll workers, which adds more...
Yeah, more people.
More people, more training, that just adds more expense, so it's, you know, efficiency and trying to maintain this one location.
And then you can use it if we do get a second polling location, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's something you can put in a truck or something and take over?
Yep. Yep, but we could transport it wherever, if, if we had an emergency and we had to evacuate this polling location, we would be securing it by police order and, and going to our, our location, but, yeah, absolutely, it's something that you can move.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, unless there's more discussion?
Go ahead.
What do we current, we, we just currently rent one?
We current, right, we own one, and then on these busy elections, we rent a second.
Just in the busy election?
Yeah. But, as, I think I talked to you about last year, they're looking at changing legislation of allowing in-person absentee being able to use the tabulator at that point, so they would be counted daily as the people come in, so if that were the case, it would, would help with that, because then we could have a dedicated machine for absentee and then for voting day.
Last question, you said there's money in this year's budget to actually purchase it.
There is money in this year's budget.
I think it makes sense to just get that, and have to rent up the thing all the time.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, purchase the DS 200.
Okay. Motion and second to approve purchasing the DS 200 election tabulator for the November election. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There you go. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. First one is plan commission. You'll see a couple of links in your packet, and I'll let Aaron talk about this too. But we were talking at the last plan commission also about an online survey and the content of the online survey for a comprehensive plan amendment, which Aaron's been working on for some time, and it's a big project.
Yeah, so um, the draft that the plan commission looked at is in your packet. There were a few tweaks that we made since then based off of their recommendations. The actual survey itself will be done on the Survey Monkey website. It'll be an online interactive thing. This is just the text of what that will be. First eight questions are kind of general demographic information that we would use to kind of sort how the rest of the answers come out, if you want to see how different age groups answer questions, or people in one part of a village, in one part of the village versus another, how they would answer questions. We can do that based off these first eight. The next section are questions about the respondent's neighborhoods. They would rate various aspects, kind of their specific neighborhood, things like street trees, street lighting, et cetera. The next one, looking at, you know, do people walk or bike in their neighborhood, and if not, you know, what would make them more likely to do so? The final section are questions more of a village-wide scope. Number twelve, trying to get opinions on growth of different land use types, whether it's too fast, too slow, or well, right? Thirteen gives a little bit of background information about the types of housing units are in the village and how we kind of compare to other comparable communities. And then based off that information, asking, do people think we should have more variety in the different types and prices, et cetera, of, of units in the village? Number fourteen, asking about different potential business types, whether people think we need more, have enough, or whether it's just not appropriate for the village, or they're not against it, but it's not something they would use. There's a list of, a dozen or so of different categories there. The next section is a visual preference survey. It provides images of different development types, land use types, and then asks for each image where people might think that would be appropriate in the village, or maybe they think it wouldn't be appropriate at all. They can answer that one as well. So those kind of range from a large mixed-use project all the way down to various types of single family. The back page here, question sixteen, we asked, what influenced your decision to move to the village? Ask them to pick, you know, what are the three most important factors to them when they came here? And then finally, we'll give them the option to put in their email address if they want to get follow-up information about the rest of the process, including or specific questions about, that we'll use POCO for as we move along. We're also planning to have some open houses when we get further along with the land use, but invite people to land as well to choose some of their addresses. So I guess I'm just looking to see, are these the right questions? Is there anything else we want to know? Is there something we want to phrase differently?
I think it covers pretty much, and I think it's a good way to get hopefully some more input, because people aren't always going to come to these meetings, but if they can just go on website, give their two cents worth of whatever.
Did a similar survey for the park plan, and we got almost five hundred responses.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on?
Was that Survey Monkey for the park plan?
Yes.
Is it only village, or we can't determine?
We can't, can't determine, yeah.
We ask in the first question, hopefully they'll tell us either what part of the village, or if they're in one of the towns.
Then were you going to put a description with the pictures?
I can do that a little more as well. I expanded the introduction to that question a little bit, but.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, again, add a little more to the pictures as well.
Aaron, what about moving question sixteen up to, straight before the village portion? Question, right before question twelve, current. Questions about village, we can have that as a first one.
Same question, just a different spot?
Just move it, move in a different spot.
So it's not after the pictures where it's lost?
Yeah, that's, I'm afraid, that's, because that's been a very important question, I like that.
And that's kind of a new one since the plan commission, so that's why I guess it's still going to be there.
Yeah, that's question sixteen, yes.
Yeah, it's sixteen. Move that up to eleven B, I guess, if you want to call it, and the new twelve.
Maybe doing that with seventeen two rather than having it at the end?
Put that up towards the front.
Yeah, I mean, maybe more people would see it, because yeah, it does kind of get lost at the end. But I like the question.
Yeah, fine, just a second, just to order that one.
Any other thoughts or comments on? Now, I'll make a motion to approve the content of the online survey with the questions to question sixteen and seven?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes, moving down to Deer Grove EMS Commission.
We met last Thursday. Those old monitors are in and they're in the process of training with those. We also received a thousand dollar grant. What was the grant for? I can't remember those. Something to do with training, I thought, but it wasn't to do with the monitors. But anyways, EMS received a thousand dollar grant. The final contract for emergency service for the town of Pleasant Springs is going to the folks at Pleasant Springs to approve. Approve the life quest contract based on a couple of revisions, then it'll come to each, each of the boards. Collective bargaining has been sent to attorney for final draft, and it looks like there's a verbal agreement on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, the grant was for new mannequins.
But is that what it's for? Okay, thank you.
Training mannequin.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And then we appointed three members to be a part of the hiring committee, Melissa for the village, Gary for the village of Deerfield, and then Chris, Christie Williams for the town Cottage Grove. That's actually already been posted with a, I believe, September fourteenth deadline to get your resumes in. We're in the process of reviewing the chief's job description, and they just preliminary started looking at some, some budgetary items. Next meeting is September twentieth at Cottage Grove.
Okay, thank you. Reports from village officers, Troy, anything else?
No report.
Hey, James?
No report.
Yeah?
Um, I just wanted to say that on election day, everything went well. It was steady and easily kept us all organized and all of the um.
You've done this a few times.
All the volunteers were great to work with, so everything went well.
John? Just one question. Like, the last couple of meetings, we talked about that joint meeting with the town, and I don't see it on the agenda. Are we not meeting with them next week, or?
I'm going to give Chris a call, because I did send an email, but I'll just give him a call, or you can. But I'm going to ask him if he does have things, give us some background. I mean, if he doesn't, I thought I'd heard from him by now, honestly, but um, it's been a while, I think it was like six months ago?
Six months, and I think at the time, we had tentatively penciled in August twenty-ninth, right before we go on a budget. Have sessions to see if there's any like joint items, big ticket items that would like be interested in sharing costs.
That would be like twenty-ninth here. We're going to have a meeting, but we'll need to know in the next couple of days to get that on the agenda.
Or if a different date works for everyone as well.
Yeah.
Is there any um, big ticket items that our departments need at all?
I think we had anything specific. We kind of left it open and just set a date, so.
Well, we do, but, you know, like, there's a new dump truck. It's replacing one that already exists that's needed for small polling and other operations, so.
That we wouldn't necessarily need to share, or?
Yeah, I mean, when it's sewing, both needed, I don't know how that would work.
Yeah.
All right. And I think there's opportunity with Lock and Park, just about in both communities where they might be interested in future plans and potential funding now.
I'll mention Lock and Park.
Okay.
And then economic development.
What's that?
Economic development, the other one. Since we have the, the study back, you have your, your chamber.
All right, I did an answer on that. Any else, John?
Nope.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Uh, no report.
I have nothing else. I guess maybe just a question for JJ. I know Brush Collection was a week or two ago, but I've seen some people at branches down with the storm again. I don't know if we're going to do round two, or how.
Uh, we were thinking of wanting to head in business at the level of getting it all fired up again. Actually, our tripper was in for a maintenance, or a warranty repair. We'll get it back tomorrow morning, but.
Okay.
We hadn't gotten, I hadn't gotten any calls or.
Okay, I just saw a few piles that I didn't know.
Sometimes piles come out early.
Okay, because people just don't know when it is, and you just pile it out there. Gotcha. Okay.
We only have a few weeks in here, really. Right, first, first week of March.
Yeah.
Okay.
Labor Day, Labor Day.
Oh, so that's close enough, then. Okay. All right, Lee, anything else?
Uh, just to, again, picking up on what I was talking about, I think they're trying to pull all the agreements together in one, and, and address some more current questions as far as the emergency services building is concerned. Just so we make sure that, that, you know, we know when, when a repair estimate, who's responsible for that, and how it changes over the course of time.
I've been on the board a while, and I don't know the answer to it either with that road and down there, so. Okay, Matt?
Um, I mentioned at the last meeting that our Andrew Day, our cable TV coordinator, is pursuing some full-time work and leaving us. However, at, knowing that City of Manona and MG schools use the AV technology kits at MG, I looked into that, and we have four students that are juniors and seniors that are Cottage Grove residents that have stepped up and came in for a training with Andrew, and should be getting started here at the end of the month into, starting in certainly September, so that'll be, that'll be good. And we don't have all the details as to timing and everything with the, with the starting of the Kadorzi Building Project getting going, but we do know that there's a BB Jack's restaurant, there's one in the forest, a pretty expansive menu, if you want to look that up. But I'll keep you updated in the update, in the next update email I send out. But they're, they're known for pizza, but they have burgers and sandwiches and nachos and all that, all that good stuff, so. It's a sit-down restaurant and something I think people will be excited about.
Is the Kadorzi Building going to be renamed?
Yeah.
So we can get rid of that name?
Yeah, correct.
Is the name off of it now?
Was the name ever on that? I don't, this is what we.
That had it on.
Those were the owners, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, but, yeah.
Call it the MG, whatever they're called now, the MG Investment, or whatever.
Badger.
Oh, oh, Badger, Silver Badger.
Silver Badger Building, okay.
That doesn't flow.
All right. Aaron probably wants to switch spots with me, so, because I always do the good, a good update, that's what he was going to say, but.
Okay, Aaron, anything else?
Just going back to the survey again, once it's set up online, and I have the actual link, I can send that to you guys and spread it out as much as I can.
Okay.
So we should enter our emails, so you can, we can be more involved.
I can find you.
Okay.
Do you labor anything, Lee's side?
Uh, just, I'm meeting tomorrow with the people from the restorative court for Dane County, and Ron Johnson is the head of that. Madison has his program, Pittsburgh, Sun Prairie, and they're looking to expand it out here, so I ran it by the LEC at our last meeting, and they were in favor of us pursuing that. So I'll meet with them tomorrow and see what the program's about, and any agreements that need to be signed, I'll run it through Lee and the board and go from there.
Chief, is, is the restrictive court?
Restorative.
Restorative court, is that for the, sorry.
It's restricted, restricted to seventeen to twenty-five-year-olds.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Was that your question?
Thank you, yes.
It's okay.
Okay.
Great, son.
All right, JJ?
John? I'll be really brief, but I'll get up to a microphone. Just wanted, roundabouts have kind of been mentioned over the last, I don't know, four or five weeks. MSA is going to give a formal presentation on the, basically start-over version of the roundabouts to the north at the next meeting. And I've reached out to four area landscape companies for quotes on what they can do as kind of a, the other end of the spectrum. So hopefully when we're actually bringing this up to you, we're bringing you a full spectrum of, of options.
Kind of a low maintenance solution is what you're looking for?
I'm absolutely low maintenance, but we keep what's out there. I've reached out to these, these companies for what they can do to, to clean them up and maintain them.
So the idea would be, that, that would be kind of the low cost, just general maintenance of what's out there, and then two, five can cash flow what is in the project plan to kind of revamp these, so that would be much more expensive. But we just wanted MSA to show you what, what that would look like as an option. It's much more expensive for us than just, you know, doing some general upkeep, but it may be something as a, you know, just for aesthetics, you know, throughout development that might.
Gateway there.
Yeah, that might be where we're running at.
Where did it go awry that this hasn't been maintained?
There's still, I think, confusion over who should be maintaining them. The, the two, just immediately north and south of the interstate are owned by DOT. Typically, those are maintained by the counties.
And they give money to the counties for that purpose?
Yes, and it's my understanding that there was some confusion at the time, maybe at the county's end, because the village didn't specify the landscaping that was put in. But I was never able to find a documentation that says we were responsible for the maintenance of it.
I got that, actually. I had to the county supervisor, and she sent me the contract. I thought I sent it to.
Yeah.
So, and the village is responsible. The village agreed to it, I don't know, ten, whenever they were put in, eight, ten years ago, and it's all signed, so.
All right.
So, so right now, we're responsible for all three of them? Is there clarity on that, or?
I don't know, but mentions the one up it.
I just asked the two specifically, right, by the interstate, I don't know the one on TT.
Believe that, well, I guess, I don't know. I guess that, I would assume would be the county still, but.
I, I need a copy. Well, you, you have it. It's, it's not, um, it's not quite that cut and dried. There's, there's more to it, but.
Because I'd be concerned if we're spending money at, at MSA to give us these nice plans, and if we're not responsible for it, we're, you know, I don't burn the money.
Yeah.
So I think we should hold off until we get clarity as to who's in charge of maintaining which one.
Well, we've spent an outgoing meetings with DOT officials and talks with county officials, and basically we've got nowhere with the county doing it.
Currently, nobody is. That's obvious.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. It's an eyesore, but, but.
Well, and it's our gateway into our commercial areas, so that's my problem.
What we understood, because this is, this is not the first time this subject has come up, and we've been trying to find out the answers to it. What we understood is that DOT had given the responsibility, the counties had money, but the money, money wasn't really being, there wasn't enough of it, it wasn't being spent. And I, I didn't recall that we had accepted responsibility for that. That could solve a lot of issues, but, you know, if we could see that, that'd be great. I haven't, but I'm sure it's not that simple, otherwise some, something would have been done a long time ago, but.
One other communities have taken theirs over too. Right, JJ, you've talked to other communities, because they have had the same problem. And that's, that's really the dilemma is, it's this.
Yeah, either when if we find out who's responsible, we're the ones that have the eyesore, you said it's our gateway.
You drive in there, and that's what you see.
So we can just fix it and send a bill to Dane County, get their attention that way?
We can draw money from the tip. Take that, take that one on, yeah. It's a good one. Well, twenty percent.
My informal survey of stopping, when I've seen people on right of way, or on roundabouts in other communities, and it's, who's responsible for these? I was just sent out here, so I mean, I, it, it's, it's interesting, and then.
And then it should be a fairly simple answer, but we just haven't been able to nail it.
Seems like it's pretty muddy water.
Yes, muddy concrete.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Dump a big, couple of big boulders on there?
Well, I do know, I've learned a lot, that's not, that's not.
I have the same question.
Currently, you do plow in the winter though, right?
Statues.
We actually kinda meet there. Um, we'll go out and basically just turn around. Actually, no, plowing is technically still there, but just for ease of it for us, we'll go around that, that southernmost one. But they still plow around.
Without Mike here, I don't, I don't know if you're able to address the Conservancy Board of Land Restoration or who might be best, uh, I was over the neighborhood over the weekend and people kinda ask, you know, what's their next phase and is it gonna come across the road or is that, is it gonna end right there at the road?
Oh, the trenching. That's just, it's ending at the road there.
Ending right there.
Yep, that's the, only to the north there is that, uh, wetland and all part of the permanent part. The part beyond that is basically just designed, uh, storm drain ditch.
That some residents mowed, some don't. Seemed like more did last year, more mowed it, kept it more of a grass way now it's gotten kind of, but.
It's a, basically it's a whole different, more structure.
When is that project supposed to be completed?
Depends on how much this rain. Assuming right now, I haven't talked to the contractor, but, uh, I'm assuming he's just got a way to get back in there and get that stuff out.
Who's responsible for the sidewalks under there? 'Cause I see they never get plowed either.
Oh, that'd be Dane County.
Okay.
If, um, if they're not plowed, anybody feel free to call, I mean, just call me directly or call me. I'll be off and pass that along with them.
The whole Gordisi, from Gordisi North, none of that ever gets taken care of. I mean, the sidewalk goes nowhere, I, I get that, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. John, anything?
Uh, personally before, so we'd just like to thank the Lions Club because they donated and planted three Cleveland pear trees at Sylwetland Park.
Thanks, John and Troy.
No, I, I didn't, it was John.
John.
I was, uh, I was getting ready for Cole Mosky that night.
Oh.
Two other Lions and myself.
And they're doing well there. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, just a update from Lisa on the primary, I guess, and then we can get back to Greg.
Melissa asked me to kinda give you a report. So we had, uh, one thousand two hundred and sixteen voters on, um, the primary, which is twenty-seven percent turnout for Cottage Grove based on, um, age, voting age of residents, which we have four hundred and, or excuse me, four thousand five hundred and fifty residents at voting age in the village. We currently have three thousand nine hundred and thirty-five registered voters, so very good. Um, like Melissa said, we had no issues during the day. It was a steady day. It was just people, one right after another, but we didn't have lines per se. Um, we did have a first in the village. We had our first provisional ballot that was cast, which means we had a person show up at the polls that did not have a valid photo ID. So they were offered to vote by a provisional ballot. And then they're given until four PM on Friday to provide their ID, which they did. And the municipal board of canvas convened this morning at nine AM. So those results were reported to Dane County to be added to our totals, um, which was a good election for that to happen and a good experience because it gave everybody, um, experience on how to handle that situation. And the voter was very pleased that she was able to do that. Um, all in all, it was a good day. I do have the breakdown of, I, I tracked just because we had to call in at eleven with our, our voter number, um, just to make sure that we had enough ballots. So at eleven AM, we're at nine percent. Three fifteen, we're at fourteen percent. Four ten, we're at seventeen percent. Six PM, we're at twenty-two percent. And seven thirty, we're at twenty-six percent. And at eight, we're at twenty-seven percent. So very good.
Awesome.
All right, Greg. Greg from Elders is here. Um, on up and stay dry.
Good evening. I just want to start by making a quick introduction. Most of you have known me, I'm Greg Johnson from Ellers. Uh, this is my colleague Jonathan Chats. Jonathan started with Ellers a couple of months ago. Came to us from the budget office in Milwaukee County. Uh, and so I've enlisted his help in kinda presenting the update to your financial management plan this evening. So you'll be hearing, I have the pleasure of hearing from both of us tonight. Uh, so that's the good news, you don't have to listen to me the whole time. But I wanna start by just giving kind of some background for some of the newer trustees in terms of what has occurred in the past with this financial management plan. Uh, this actually started back in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, it was kinda the first year that we created the financial management plan for the village. Uh, really what this is, is it's a, as the name implies, kind of a long-term financial forecast for all the villages, levy funds and tax and criminal finance districts. And what we do is we do a line item forecast. Uh, take the budget documents that, you know, the village approves each year. You have your line item budgets for your general fund, your capital projects, your street fund, your debt service fund. Uh, we project all of that forward on a line item basis, but kinda present the results in kind of more of a summary format here, uh, so you can see some general trends in terms of what's happening with your, uh, overall tax levy going forward. And really, the, the purpose, since we did the initial plan, we did an update last year and then we're here to talk about, uh, the update again this evening. Uh, really what this is, is we view it as kind of a kickoff to your budget process for the upcoming fiscal year. And really what we're here to show you is kind of what we characterize as the all-in scenario. Um, it takes kind of current funding of your existing operating budgets, takes your capital improvement plan that's been prepared by staff and really show what the full impact is if everything was funded as identified. Uh, so you can kind of start your budget process kind of knowing if we literally did everything that was in our capital plan, continued ongoing operations of our existing village apartments, what would that kind of look like over a multi-year period? So hopefully that can serve as a, kind of a spring point to your, your budget process. Uh, so our intention this evening is to present the initial update. Uh, we're gonna come back in a meeting in mid-September to take into account your input after you have some additional time to digest this and we'll present, you know, modifications or update, uh, updates of the plan as needed. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna turn over to Jonathan and he's gonna walk through some of your financial metrics, starting with your fund balance.
Hi, uh, great to see all of you and happy to be here. Um, so I will quickly run through some of the higher level, um, you know, looking down from a forty-eight thousand foot view, uh, components of the budget, starting with the fund balance. And this first page really just breaks down the different categories of, uh, money within the fund balance and your policy, which, uh, which requires that the fund balance be maintained at the level of twenty-three percent of general fund expenditures. Um, and highlights that, uh, rating agencies look at fund balance to see, uh, the health of the government and financial management structure. So jumping into the current general fund balance and looking backwards, uh, you can see that it's been growing, uh, since two thousand and twelve and, um, currently has a thirty-four percent ratio of, uh, uh, general fund expenditures to fund balance, which is exceeding the level that you, you all set in the policy. And, um, you can see obviously that it's been increasing over time as the general fund has grown. The next slide is the equalized value growth over time. This shows in the blue, the TID out numbers and in the green is the TID in numbers. So you can see again, since two thousand and fourteen, that the, uh, overall value has been increasing and that gap between blue and green would be the increment that's being generated off of the TIDS.
If you could maybe cover that a little bit more in the sense of like a, from a one standpoint, there's a few more members that haven't been through a budget process before, so, you know, the TID in, TID out, what that, what that means.
Sure. So, uh, TID in really represents the full equalized or market value of all property within the village, regardless of whether that's in a TIP district or outside of a TIP district. And then the TID out number is really, just subtracts out the increment value. So when we kind of do these multi-year projections, kind of the equalized values, you know, come into play because everything within the TIP districts that we'll look at later is all done on an equalized basis. Uh, and so you, you have your assessed values that your assessor comes up with. Um, that's, gets submitted to the Department of Revenue and they equalize property values for all communities within the state. And that's really, you know, to try to allow comparisons from one community to the next is another purpose of equalized values because each community can have its own assessment ratios. So comparing assessed values from one community to the next isn't really a good methodology to use because one community may be assessing at, uh, full market value and other community may be assessing at ninety percent of that value. So the state equalizes these values to arrive at, you know, kind of a, a market value that's used for tax increment purposes. It's used for apportionment of the levy between the other taxing jurisdictions. Uh, and we use it in our methodology because it kind of neutralizes the whole reassessment process and that fluctuation in those assessment ratios from year to year. It kind of provides a, a stable value for projection purposes. So that's, that's how equalized values come into play.
Nice.
Okay, yeah, seeing growth, uh, through the years there. Moving on, uh, back to the general fund performance. Um, you can see, this shows the, the, the blue is your revenues, the red is your expenditures and the green is, uh, either your surplus or deficit. Since two thousand and fifteen, there's been a surplus. And, uh, obviously that's another important factor that rating agencies look at and everything to assess the, the health of the, the village. This is a, this next one is a breakdown of the expenditures by category. Uh, you can see that, uh, the public safety and public works, uh, budgets take up about seventy-five percent of the overall expenditures. And, uh, this is based on two thousand and seventeen actual, uh, actual numbers.
It's pretty typical of what we see for communities across the state. You know, it's similar in size of Cottage Grove in terms of that concentration of public safety and public works expenditures kind of being a big driver of your general fund budget. So there's nothing unusual about this, this overall, overall profile.
And likewise, this is your revenues from two thousand and seventeen. Uh, and seventy-five percent of that is, uh, your levied taxes. And, uh, you can see nine, nine percent is intergovernmental revenues that have been generated, so. And leading up to the big moment here, the S and P report from the last debt issue in May maintained a double A, stable rating. And, uh, a few important issues that were cited, um, in the positive were, again, that thirty-four percent fund balance ratio that was, uh, we looked at earlier, exceeding the level that you've set. The, you know, the strong, the growth of the economy locally, the, uh, the, the performance lately of the last three years, being able to generate a surplus in budget. And, uh, the liquidity, having, uh, having a plan also with debt to pay down seventy-eight percent within the next ten years. So, uh, the overall profile that S and P was able to come up with was very positive and, um, that's why they were able to maintain the rating.
And just one comment on, on the fund balance. You know, as Jonathan mentioned, you know, at, through two thousand and seventeen, you're, you know, slightly above kind of the maximum range that you've identified for your, you know, general fund assigned and unassigned fund balance. And, you know, while you have a policy and that range is important, um, it's also important to understand though that the rating agencies look at where you've been at historically. So even if you have a policy and, you know, and you start dipping down into, not recommending you do this, but if you start dipping down into the middle of that range, you may think, well, I'm still within the policy. It isn't really gonna have a impact on the rating. Um, that likely wouldn't be the case. Even though you have a policy and the rating agencies like that you have a formal fund balance policy, they don't just look at where you're at in terms of the policy, they look at where you're at historically. So when you're at, you know, a, kind of this upper thirty percent level, that's really where they kind of like to see you remain. So just kind of something to kind of comment on your policy. While it's good that you're above it, um, you know, it's also important to kind of look at where you historically are at because the rating agencies like that stability.
Next, we have the assumptions that we used in developing the financial management plan. And I think this is important to emphasize that this, this plan really is a line item plan. It's based on the line item budget that you have. And we've built in, um, the, the assumptions here to show, um, what things could look like and, and based on, on these predefined, um, these predefined numbers. So, um, that's just a way of saying this is how, this is our methodology, really. And this is continuing that to show how, uh, each category is broken down on the revenue side.
So just to kind of summarize, I mean, we're, we're trying to be, you know, conservative on both sides of the ledger for the, you know, the revenues. You know, we're really not projecting, you know, significant growth in your non-levy revenue sources in attempt, you know, to be conservative. Uh, you know, similarly on the expenditure side, you know, we're trying to kind of, you know, account for some, you know, growth and, and some, and some costs and trying to, you know, not be overly conservative in terms of understanding those expenditures. We've kind of shared our, our methodology with staff. As Jonathan mentioned, you know, this is all done on a line item basis. So, you know, the way we build the model is if you change one of these forecast assumptions, we just change the percentage, the entire model updates for any line item that is associated with these costs. So we try to categorize everything just because most of your expenditures can fall into a certain category, uh, but it is all done on that line item basis.
And here is an overview, a summary of the general fund, uh, starting with the two thousand and seventeen actuals, uh, the current budget and then projecting out to two thousand and twenty-three. Um, this looks at it, uh, at, uh, into the, the roll-up categories that you have here for revenues and expenditures. And, um.
So. Yeah, so I mean, I think, just to kind of talk about this a little bit, so I mean, in terms of just, you know, your revenues, again, you'll see that there isn't a lot of growth, you know, in your intergovernmental revenues on down in terms of kind of projecting that growth going forward. It's very static, uh, which is intended to be, uh, conservative in terms of what's being projected. Uh, you know, on the expenditure side, again, you'll see that there's some more, you know, you'll see some more appreciation, uh, in terms of those overall costs. So, you know, we saw that your general fund revenue, seventy-five percent of that comes from the property tax levy, which, uh, is very typical of a Wisconsin municipality revenue profile. You're, we're a property tax-heavy state, uh, for better or worse. Um, so this kind of illustrates at a high level, you know, across your departments that we're really trying to be conservative on the revenue side particularly, but forecasting some increased costs on the expenditure side. And so that property tax levy calculation, those, uh, changes across the top, again, that's just the general fund portion. We're gonna look at the overall levy summary once we go through the other levy component funds.
So this is, uh, the Street Tree Fund, which is another levy component fund. Um, and this, again, shows, uh, just a level of where we are right now and going up over the next five years. This is all based on, on input from staff, so we've, uh, been able to sort of be as realistic as possible with what's, uh, what's to come. Uh, so now we're getting towards the capital fund and, um, this is, uh, a, a fund that the staff puts together the plan for and, um, is funded through the levy. And, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think really what, and Matt, if you wanna interject here as well, I think really the, to the village's credit, you've kind of expanded the use of this fund over time. I think, uh, initially it really focused primarily on kind of equipments and vehicle and kind of your rolling stock replacement. That's still a key component, uh, of, you know, this capital fund. Uh, but, you know, it's been expanded to include some of the items listed, some technology, uh, compliance projects, some facility maintenance projects and things of that nature. So it really allows you to try to build up dollars over, you know, a multi-year period to pay for capital, to really reduce borrowing for some of your more routine, uh, capital items. Matt, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, and in addition, even though it's still equipment, some of the, we've had kind of issues with some of the joint departments like the, um, Fire Department and Durobi MS as far as creating like a capital plan where, you know, there's budget and savings. So we've incorporated with the village's portion of a new ambulance and, um, uh, the village's portion of a new fire truck into the plan. So that's, you know, that's how it's kind of expanded over time. But, um, yeah, the goal is to be able to fund all of this through, through the tax levy.
over time. But, yeah, the goal is to be able to fund all of this through the tax levy in a savings standpoint instead of borrowing for these things.
I don't see the capital on page, on slide 13, it's, you know, capital outlay. It's just blank down there. It's not listed in that? So where does that come in?
That'll come in in a couple of slides. So it's in a separate fund.
It's a different fund.
All right. So it's not, it's not part of expenditures?
It's not part of the...
The general fund?
Yeah, it's not part of the general fund expenditures. It's in a separate fund. So you're going to see that in two more slides.
Okay. Yeah, so this is, this slide 16 is a, just a snapshot of what the 2019 planned capital fund projects are and where they might be, whether it will change or not.
Yeah, so this kind of gives you a snapshot of what we were just kind of talking about conceptually, kind of a mixture of equipment, you know, mixture of some smaller road repaving and just some other building maintenance and things of that nature. So kind of more an expansive list of some capital projects. So staff has modeled out these type of expenditures over a five-year period, which is kind of summarized on the next page, on page 17.
Yeah. Yeah, so 17 is the levies, is the capital fund summary showing that the levy amounts each year increasing from this year, projected at $338,000 up to 2023, where it levels off at $625,000. And then your expenditure side, as well as the fund balance for the capital fund at the bottom of the page, showing how it changes from beginning of the year to the end of the year.
Yeah, so this really just shows kind of over a multi-year period that you're accumulating that cash, you know, collecting levy dollars annually, expending some of the funds, but building it up to pay for these things occurring. So, you know, you're starting with, you know, a beginning balance of about $953,000, you know, over the five-year period, you're ending, you're at about $515,000. So this would continue beyond the five years, but this just kind of shows conceptually how that works. So this is where those capital expenditures are located, that aren't funded through debt.
Continuing on is the park improvements. This is the plan going from this year till 2026, but you can see the gray shaded box is the, sort of the five-year capital plan. And so just lists out all of your park improvement projects that we've had and the staff has provided. And at the bottom, it breaks down by funding source, so you can see which ones will be covered by the park development fund and which ones will be borrowed or through bond issuance or other types of debt obligations. So we projected that out through 2023. And now I can see the park development fund summary. The projects in the last slide that show what we're planning to fund with the park development fund and the revenue, the corresponding revenue, as well as the corresponding fund balance. So you can see kind of at the end of the year, what's been levied for, what's been spent, and what's, how the fund balance is changing as projects are getting done.
And this can really be kind of, this gets evaluated really annually. So some projects, you know, the revenue source that comes into this fund is really largely dependent on growth. You collect that money as new development occurs within the village. So to the extent that you start seeing increases in revenue into this fund, you can certainly look at cash funding some more of the parks' capital projects. So some of these projects are being paid directly through cash. Some of the project costs, you know, related to, you know, particularly the splash pad design and some other design costs for the shelter improvements, you know, we're showing that that's initially paid through this park development fund. But you can also reimburse that through future borrowings to add money back into this fund as well. So it's kind of a combination of kind of paying for some expenditures on an interim basis if some of those are eventually financed through debt. Other projects, it's just, again, trying to mimic what we've done on the capital side for, you know, a lot of your equipments and some of your facility and infrastructure improvements, trying to pay for some of the park projects with cash. So we're being very conservative here in terms of what we're projecting for future revenue. You know, hopefully, you know, you'll have more revenue and you can finance more things with cash.
And here's a similar looking table for public works projects that we have in the plan. And again, it's, you know, the same setup where we have the funding sources at the bottom to show how they will be. In this, in this case, we do have one project that's projected to be funded with TID cash, which Greg will go over a little bit later. But the rest, you can see some grant funds and additional borrowing to meet the financing for these projects.
So in terms of the, kind of looking at the financing plan, since that chart, you know, on page 20, kind of, a lot of these projects, you know, it's your larger ticket, primarily street infrastructure project costs. You know, since you're funding your other projects with cash, and some of this, you know, is appropriate to look at potentially financing with debt. And so when we do a multi-year plan, what we try to do is kind of group several years' worth of projects into a couple of financings. You can finance things certainly on an annual basis, but you can also cut down on the times you have to go into the bond market if you maybe group a couple of years' projects, you know, into one financing. And so we've done that here. You know, that can easily be changed and adjusted. You know, typically, the most we recommend is you maybe borrow for two years' worth of projects at a time, just because you can see some significant changes in costs beyond that period of time, and you don't want to overborrow either. So we've, we've kind of grouped, you know, for example, your 2020 and 2021 projects that we showed as being financed, you know, those have been grouped into one borrowing. And then your 2022 and 2023 projects have been grouped into one borrowing as well. So we can change that, but when we're kind of looking at a multi-year plan, we try to look for some economies in combining some financings. So in 2019, really, the main infrastructure project that you have in your plan is the Highway BB reconstruction from Sand Piper to Crawford. That was really the only project that we had identified that wasn't, you know, wasn't going to be funded by grants or other cash. And so if that's a standalone financing, you could do that through a local bank. You could do that through a state trust fund loan. You may not have to go to the bond market to do that. We just show that as being funded through a state trust fund loan to kind of be conservative. That $700,000 project amount, there may be some more, less costly ways to do that than going into the bond market. But once you start looking into, you know, beyond, you know, 2020 and 2021, you know, you have 1.8 million of projects in 2020, 650,000 of projects in 2021. So you're looking at, you know, much larger borrowing amounts. And similarly, for your 2022 and 2023, those are shown as being financed in 2022. So again, this, you know, is kind of a fluid plan. I mean, we adjust this each year, but we have grouped projects into one borrowing just to kind of make this a little more manageable in terms of the times you're going into the bond market. So in terms of, you know, what this does to your debt service levy, that's graphically shown on page 22. Shows your existing debt levy in blue. That's kind of, you know, leveling off. I'll talk about, you know, the TIF six debt in a little more detail in the future, but that debt has been incorporated into your levy for the past couple of budgets. We just show that separately. And then in green is, you know, all the debt service related to those financings that we're showing on the previous page. So as I mentioned on the onset, this is kind of an all-in scenario. It's taking your CIP and showing what it would look like if you literally financed everything, knowing you're likely going to look at this, maybe prioritize, change projects. Some may happen, some may not. We understand that, but we're just starting to show you the full impact so you can, you can see that. So the same information that's on slide 22 is on slide 23, just in numbers. So this kind of shows with that full funding of your capital improvement plan, you know, you are seeing some increases to your debt service levy in 2021 and 2022, and then out through 2023. So that really kind of covers that five-year, you know, window that we're modeling here within your plan. So your existing debt service is pretty stable. The portion of your levy that's covering the TIF six debt, that's also very stable. And then we've kind of layered in, you know, some of the future debt service to kind of, you know, manage that future levy impact going forward. The other thing that we take a look at, anytime we look at putting a borrowing plan together, is where you stand on your geo-debt limit. The Wisconsin constitution limits the amount of general obligation debt outstanding principal to no more than 5% of your full equalized value. We talked about that TID in number previously, that kind of the full market value of all property within the village. The amount of principal you have outstanding can't exceed 5%. So looking on page 24, kind of looking from left to right, we've got your existing TID in equalized value showing, you know, in the year-ending 2018 column, projected some growth in your TID in value going forward. We've kind of isolated the Summit project that's being built in TID 5. We think that value is relatively low in terms of where that's going to come in at. But since that's kind of a large amount of value that's going to come on at one point in time, at least in terms of your borrowing capacity, we've isolated that. So at the end of 2018, this fiscal year, you're at about 55% of your utilization of your debt limit. You have about 16.9 million of borrowing capacity remaining. As we see, even if you fully funded your CIP projects, at least those debt financed over the next five years, you know, your debt, utilization of your debt limit doesn't go any higher than where you're at presently. So at least from a debt limit standpoint, this is certainly doable. This really more comes down to kind of affordability and levy, levy impact is the larger issue. You have sufficient borrowing capacity at least to legally finance these projects and leave remaining capacity for future projects. So now we're going to kind of get into kind of the overall, kind of big picture summary of what all of this looks like. We've talked about kind of four funds, your general fund, your capital projects fund, your Street Tree Fund, and your debt service fund. So taking everything that we've kind of shown in components, we bring it all together. So on page 25 is just a graph that just shows the components of your levy going forward. The general fund is obviously the largest part of your levy. And then you can see, you know, your existing debt, as we've talked about, is fairly stable. And then we see that new debt kind of getting layered in as your existing debt payments decrease. So now we kind of really focus on the big picture. And again, I want to kind of emphasize what I've said twice, but I'll say it a third time. This is the all-in scenario. So this is, again, full funding of kind of ongoing operations with some projections for increase in costs and full funding of your capital improvement plan. So you'll see the blue line kind of shows your levy, and then the numbers show your tax rate on an equalized basis in terms of how that would be trending on this all-in scenario. So that graphically kind of illustrates what's happening. The supplemental chart to this is really on the next page. Oh, I guess this is really kind of the all-in scenario. That kind of shows really kind of where, you know, kind of where your levy is going in terms of, you know, kind of overall impact. So it kind of shows, again, kind of what that, you know, what that looks like in terms of, you know, dollar per thousand of value and kind of where that is trending. So even though, you know, you're seeing some increase in your equalized value, your levies are kind of going up in those four components that we've been summarizing. And so you kind of see where, you know, that is trending in terms of your levy and your overall tax rate.
This assumes that we do not do a reassessment.
Correct, because this is really based on your equalized value. So I mean, it's kind of neutralizing that assessment process.
Right.
It's taking your current value and projecting some growth in that going forward. Which is kind of why we use the equalized for projection purposes, because your assessed ratios can really fluctuate from year to year. So you can project on that methodology, but when you're kind of doing comparisons, it's the equalized kind of neutralizes that. So I mean, that all the, everything here is done on a comparable basis. So I mean, the tax rate is comparable from prior years because we're using that same methodology. One other item that we typically look at in terms of, you know, the overall levy limit summary is on page 27. Wisconsin municipalities have been under levy limits since 2005. You're allowed to increase your levy each year by your amount of net new construction. And then there are adjustments that are permitted on the levy limit worksheet to increase it beyond net new construction. The main adjustment that's applicable to the village is adjustments for general obligation debt. All debt that's authorized after July of 2005 is fully exempted from levy limits. So any debt you issue is not subject to that net new construction limit. So what this shows is really if you, you know, fully funded those levy, your full levy for everything all in, you know, it, can you get there under levy limit law as it stands presently? And the answer to that is yes. However, you know, we looked at your overall levy, a big component of that is your capital levy, which we showed was increasing to cash finance for items and kind of finance more on a cash basis going forward. That certainly makes sense from a financial standpoint. We always would recommend the extent that you could eliminate borrowing, that's a, that's a good thing. The problem with that is really the levy limit law doesn't really allow you to do that all that easily because your operating levy and your capital levy are subject to really that net new construction limit. And so you can increase your debt adjustments, but as your debt kind of tapers off, you know, your allowable levy decreases. And so, you know, as we see in that last line, that unused levy capacity, you know, that number is starting to dwindle as we get out into future years. A lot can change between now and 2023, and you look at this annually so we can keep an eye on it. You know, if nothing really changed here in this model, we don't, well, you know, it may reduce the amount that you can finance through your capital levy. It's still remaining compliant with levy limits. So nothing that's an immediate concern, but it's just something we'll need to continue to monitor going forward. So before I continue and kind of talk about the tips, are there any just kind of questions on the levy components of the financial plan?
All right. Yeah, I have a couple. And I'm one of the new guys that hasn't been through the budget cycle yet. So debt capacity projection, if I'm reading this on slide 24.
Mm-hmm.
We're currently combined principal existing, we're $20.3 million in debt.
Yes, that's the amount of your principal outstanding, just general obligation debt as the end of 2018.
Okay. And then going back to both parks improvement as well as public works, 2020 is the year that looks like we're going to be doing some significant borrowing. Is that what you're talking about, doing it one time and taking on that debt?
Correct.
All at once versus...
Spreading it out. I mean, the way we built the plan is that the projects that are shown as being financed with debt in, you know, in 2020 or 2021 are all being financed in 2020. So it's kind of doing two years' worth of projects, you know, and so you can spend that money kind of over, over a multi-year period. You don't have to do it that way. Typically, when we kind of do a multi-year plan, we try to consolidate things into a couple of years just to, for efficiency standpoint, you get some economies of scale if you can borrow for a couple of years with the projects versus going into the market every year.
Okay, thank you.
And having a debt, having debt like that helps how, like you said with the levy, it helps?
It really, I mean, the reasons for issuing debt, you know, kind of come down to a couple of different reasons. I mean, one, if you're, most of what you're financing with debt are some of your larger infrastructure projects, and those projects have a longer useful life. So when you finance projects with debt, you know, over a period of time, you kind of have what we call generational equity. Future village residents that aren't here now are going to help be paying for some of that debt service who will also be benefiting from that project. So if you're financing a new road improvement, that's going to last, you know, 15, 20 years. And so you're having, by spreading that cost over a term of borrowing, future generations are helped paying for that. So that's kind of a philosophical approach. The other reason is, is, you know, candidly, is the levy limits. You can't increase your levy just to fund for everything on a cash basis because you just couldn't get there under the net new construction limit. There is the exemption for debt service that allows you to finance things. So it's, it's kind of affordable, you know, there's kind of that spreading that cost to make that a little more manageable, having future generations help pay for it, so you're not stocking all your current residents with the cost of a road improvement that's going to, other future residents will help benefit from that aren't here presently. And then the other component is really levy limits. So, you know, most communities... So, you know, most communities for their larger infrastructure, they're financing that with some level of debt just to spread that cost out because the cost of doing all of that on a cash basis while preferable and desirable in a perfect world is just, you'd see substantial swings in your levy. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Just last question on that slide 28, the debt capacity. So that just shows that we're going to borrow in 2020 and 2022.
Yes.
Assuming no more borrowing, we're going to be paid off in 2040, 20 years after the last borrow.
Right, right. The most, the longest you can amortize general obligation debt is 20 years. A lot of your debt has been for some larger infrastructure projects and also has been attributable to your TIP district. So the debt has been amortized over the life of the TIP district. So that's typically why you're, I think Johnson, you know, cite the statistics in the rating report. I think 78% of your debt was, is it paid off in 10 years?
10 years.
So, so you're still, you know, amortizing a good amount of your debt in a shorter period of time. But again, to try to manage that levy impact and for your, a lot of your existing debt is TIP related and that debt was issued in the structure over the life of the TIPs so the TIP could, you know, support the payments.
Great. Would it be possible at the, at the next meeting in September, if you could bring the computer so you have the model there?
Yeah.
And, you know, if there, if a board member would like to see?
Sure.
Moving something a few years down the line to see how that affects?
Yeah.
The bottom line?
I've got, we have that with us. Someone needs a, I just need a computer.
Okay.
But yeah, we brought that with us. So the last part of this kind of focuses on your established TIP districts, those that have, you know, been in place. You'll recall recently you just created TIPS, eight, nine, and 10. Those haven't really incurred any cost yet, so we're not really, there's no point in really talking about those yet. We'll incorporate those into the model in future years. So the map on page 28 just shows where each of tid 5, tid 6, and tid 7 is located. So tid 5 is kind of Commerce Park, tid 6 is kind of some areas, kind of in this immediate area, and then tid 7 is south of here. So tid 5 was created in 2003. The expenditure period for this district ends in 2021. So you were talking earlier about some of the roundabout improvements and some projects you're looking at doing within the TIP district. You have until 2021, May 19th, to commit funds for TIP projects. That's by statute. So that date is, you know, quickly approaching. This TIP is generating positive cash flow. I'll go through that next. It's projected to close in 2026. Some projects that recently the village did last year, the kind trunk and and school road improvements, those are financed with debt, but that debt was assigned to tid 5. So the cash flow projections, starting on page 30, kind of working our way across from left to right. We project the future tax increment within the district. We've only really kind of projected some known development that's occurring within the district, and that increment kind of levels off, so we're really not counting on a lot of future growth other than what we already know about. There's some intergovernmental revenues, some computer aids that are typically coded to this district, are charged to the recipients, revenues to this district. So that's shown as a revenue source. The future bond proceeds, you'll see the third debt issue N, the taxable geo notes is a large balloon payment of a million dollars that's due in 2022. We're assuming that's going to be restructured, so we're showing the bond proceeds coming in to make that million dollar principal payment, and then that debt issue will get restructured. And then presently, through a development agreement with Landmark, you have some shortfall payments that have now been assigned to some of it. So I still call it Landmark just because that's kind of how it was originally referenced. As additional increment gets generated on properties that are identified in that development agreement, you know, we're projecting that those shortfall payments won't be made after 2020. So those are the main revenues into the TIP district. Several of the existing debt issues outstanding are attributable to tid 5. Those are all shown 2008, 2012, 2012B, 2014. Then we kind of turn over to page 31. This just continues. The 2017 bonds, that portion is attributable to tid 5. The 2022 debt is the restructuring of that balloon payment I had mentioned earlier. So we have all of your existing debt service payments. We just have an allowance in there for just some ongoing costs of the village of $25,000 a year. You're paying an incentive for the clinic property, $55,500 per year. Summit will have an incentive of about $1.3 million plus interest. That's estimated at this point in time. I know you've recently had discussions and some incentives with the Godorzi property. I think this is a little higher than what you've agreed to, but that's projected going forward. And then we have some cash finance projects, the roundabouts that you've been talking about, and then it's the bike path extension that was in your capital plan. We're showing that being financed with cash. So what does all this great fund mean? By the end of 2026, is when we're projecting that the cumulative cash balance in the TIP district will exceed the amount of debt outstanding. So we're projecting this district will close one year early than its maximum statutory life. So the district is doing very well. It's allowing you to pay for some projects with cash, do some of the development incentives that have been awarded, and, you know, continue to see the district be financially successful. So the district is certainly meeting its obligations. For TIP district number six, this district was created in 2004. Its expenditure period ends next year. There were some infrastructure projects that were financed with this district, I believe back in 2009 or 2012. I can't remember, it's off my head.
I think it's nine.
Nine, thank you. And those were tid eligible expenses, which mean they were identified in the project plan as being a tid eligible expense. You probably heard when we did the creation of the new districts, I said there's always a difference between a project being tid eligible and a project being tid feasible. Just because in the plan, that means that the tid can legally pay for it, that doesn't mean the tid will have the actual money to pay for it. So while those were tid eligible expenses, when those costs weren't incurred several years ago, the tid has been generating a nominal amount of increment. And so when we did the update, did the first version of this plan back in 2016, we recommended that you start levying for that debt service. The village had been using some other funds, some debt service funds, some modest funds from the general fund and the water utility to pay for some of those expenses up until that point. We felt, and your staff agreed, that really wasn't sustainable long-term, so we started levying for that debt service. Most of the property that's undeveloped in that land was incorporated into tid 9 to kind of start the clock over because the expenditure period was approaching. The end of that maximum life was, you know, was in 2026 as well. So we're kind of running out of time. So tid 6, I mentioned this when you created tid 9, is kind of now kind of really become defunct. It really isn't going to have much use going forward. So on page 33, you know, you will collect increment next year. I think we recommend kind of working with your auditors to really determine if the next year should be your last year of increment collection. TID 6 owes the debt service fund about $325,000 is at the end of last fiscal year. You've got a fund balance in your debt service fund that should be able to absorb that. You know, there's a bit of, you know, a hit to your general fund. Your fund balance is healthy, you can absorb that. The water utility really hasn't had a repayment plan anticipated to get that money back, so I mean, there'll be some loss there as well. You've been levying for the debt the past couple of years. It's a more sustainable levy approach. This district really isn't generating enough increment, so likely the recommendation's going to be to close it. The magic date we need to really make that decision by is April 15th of next year. So there's time, but I think the writing is kind of on the wall for this district. So last but not least is tid 7. This was created in 2004, same time as tid 6. Its expenditure period ends in October of next year. There's been some projects financed by the village. There's been a development incentive for the Houston's development property that's a pay-as-you-go development incentive. What that means is, we also call that a municipal revenue obligation, is not debt of the village. It is just a debt obligation that is provided to the developer but not funded by a debt issue by the village. And that is paid out to Houston's annually based on tax increment that's generated from their project. So on page 35 is the cash flow projection for this district. We've kind of had, really showed no future development occurring beyond, you know, what's been certified so far in that district. So your increment's projected to be about $776,000 a year. There's some debt issued in 2012 and 2017 and 2018. It's all attributable to this TIP district. The MRO payments are the payments to Houston's that we're projecting going forward. Some other miscellaneous costs that you pay for your district. So this district, we're anticipating is going to close in 2023, which, you know, is the projected year of closure. So really the fifth year of our financial management plans that really could start to impact your, you know, your equalized value that following year, 2024. So similar to tid 5, this district is doing well. Projected to close two years ahead of schedule with no new development. Obviously, if you see some loss of value, that could change us a little bit, but we've got quite a healthy cushion in 2023. So that seems to be a strong date at the moment. So as I mentioned, this is kind of the initial presentation of this model. We know it's a lot to kind of consider. You know, we're scheduled to come back on September 18th. We can incorporate some additional changes to the model, as Matt mentioned. We can dazzle you all with spreadsheets and bring our computer and show how things change. You can ooh and ah, and Jonathan and I can curse as we wonder if the model's working. But no, we'll make those changes, and so you can kind of see it's interactive. We do that on purpose to kind of help you make those decisions. So if you want to see if your revenues get more aggressive, if your expenditures make changes, we click a button, the model updates, you can see how it changes.
That sounds exciting.
Doesn't it? Doesn't it?
I'm just curious, did you, is the closings of the TIDS included in the slide on 24 with equalized values? I mean, the projected closing of it in 2023?
It isn't because the tid values are already in these numbers. So your?
These include tid values?
Yes.
That we can't, or we don't get revenue from, you're saying?
Yeah. So for your debt capacity, that is based on your tid in value, so that your increment value is already factored in there. When we did the tax levy projections, kind of in the tax rate projections that were kind of summarized in that graph.
Yeah.
And there's another chart we'll need to include in here that kind of shows that equalized value. That is based on your tid out numbers.
Got it.
Because the TIDS haven't closed yet through 2023. When we get to next year and we add another model, you're going to start seeing how in 2024.
I was wondering why the equalized value was going up by 21% over five years, but the revenue, the revenue that we're getting is not anywhere close to that.
Right, right. It's more of a, it's more of your borrowing capacity isn't driving your tax rate numbers that we're projecting in the plan. The tid in numbers only impact your borrowing capacity. That's the only, and that's by the Wisconsin constitution. So that's, that's the reason we kind of use equalized value in these models is because the tid end becomes relevant from your borrowing.
I don't know how hard it would be to create that chart that you have on 27, I believe it was, that shows the equalized value with tid out.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, I would love to see that.
They should have included that in here, so we'll have that. Because really, what it is, is it, it shows the value assumptions behind the graph on page 26.
Because I just want to see, you know, that, we know the value's going up.
Right.
Even without the tid.
Right, correct. We'll email that to staff and they can send that out.
I'd like to see kind of expenditures going along with that, not getting ahead of it.
Right.
You know what I mean?
We'll send that out so you have it right away, and we'll incorporate that into the next presentation. I think we unintentionally didn't put that in. It should have been on another slide.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Item 10, communications and miscellaneous business. Consider approval of vouchers. Any questions, comments?
Where, what's the ICMA conference?
That's the National City Manager Conference annually. It's in Baltimore at the end of September.
Oh, great.
Is there a motion to approve vouchers?
Motion to approve vouchers.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Correspondents, the only thing that, and it's, I guess it's not really official, but I did get a signed letter from the mayor of Sun Prairie, the city administrator, the police fire EMS chief thanking our fire department and specifically Chief Labor and Chief Wolf from the fire department for what they did for the city of Sun Prairie. So hopefully we won't have to do that again. But I mean, I'm glad they were able to respond as they did. Upcoming community events?
Start September 4.
Much for kiddos.
Absolutely. First week is kind of crossing guards. I gotta give them credit. I couldn't take your life in your hands doing that. Future agenda items. You're on a village, or joint meeting, I'll have a report on that. And what, something else I thought? Oh, the policy for the room use. Okay. You have the input from staff. Okay, anything else?
Well, I emailed you the rugby club.
Yeah.
They are looking to join us in October, not in September like they thought.
Okay.
They went, they had a board meeting just last night and they're gonna meet with their lawyer and try to figure out, you know, what they are going to be able to do.
Okay.
With basically, with that agreement.
Sure.
Have with them.
Can I ask the board, do you want copies of, well, I mean, we keep referring to this plan? And I think that Jack may be one of the only ones that probably has it, but there's a packet of material that is available to you so that you can find out or you can see exactly what we're talking about.
I think it would be good if you could give everybody sort of a timeline of how this started and kind of the evolution of it to where we're at now.
Executive summary.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
An overview.
Yeah, overview from the 40,000.
Did you approve the shed for them?
Did I?
No, not, I'm sorry, talk to Matt. The plant, it got tabled at the plant commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
They didn't show up at the plant commission.
They didn't show up?
Nope.
No, they did not show up, so it's like.
All right.
It was a family emergency.
Oh, okay.
We want some answers from them basically before we.
Yeah, I know. You know, then he was pretty gung ho about attending the meeting and then just backed out.
With the attendance they get at those matches, I mean, they should get some revenue. I don't know what they do for revenue.
Well, yeah, they're, they're getting most of their revenue from big donations. They do have, they have a savings balance built up. And when they made all those promises, they didn't have any money. So now they've got some money.
And I think it would be helpful for whoever's going to present to give us some of their history. Because again, we tend to have just on secondhand.
One-sided, yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, I can report to you what they've said to us, but, you know, I'd like to find out from them, well, okay, yeah, we understand that up to this point, you know, we really didn't have the money, maybe now we do. This is our plan.
They don't have as much as they thought they would have, but they have money.
And the same person that's in charge now probably wasn't.
Not at all. He was, yeah.
Inherited something.
He's young, younger, I should say. And they did say very positive things about, you know, getting the work, the cooperation they get from JJ and his team and so forth and Parks. I know that Sean has worked with him as well, so it's just that that agreement is just way off track.
Yeah, and we just want them to address it in some fashion. And, you know, I don't want this guy to walk in here and get knocked over, you know, with, you know, all these questions, so I'd like.
He's aware of it. He's read the agreement.
Good.
He is. He is, he's...
He would be ahead of...
Me. No, we're all here. Well, and he's hoping that, you know, because it is so off track, that we can kind of start over.
Right.
There you go. Yeah. I mean, they, you can't, can't just start amending that thing. I think we almost have to start with a clean sheet.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for future agenda? Otherwise, item 11 is adjournment. Time to adjourn. Motion and second to adjourn, non-debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.